Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, October 8th, 2012. Pretty close to seven o'clock, our regular starting time. Tonight, City Council is meeting in several committee meetings. We will have three separate committee meetings. On some of them, the agendas are kind of long, so we'll have several issues to deal with. First is Planning and Development Committee. Chairperson, Chris Fall. And we have Finance and Personnel Committee, Chris Nysley. And City and Safety Services Committee, Kent Butler, who will probably be here shortly. So, we're going to begin with Chris Fall's Planning and Development Committee. Ms. Fall.
Great, thank you. First on my committee meeting is an annexation petition. And we've talked about this on and off for the past few months. And this is for the former Columbia Gas site. And we have been given an annexation agreement that the township trustees, between the township trustees of Canaan Township, City of Athens, and the Hemske Holdings, who is the owner of the former Columbia Gas site. And this is the start of the negotiations for the City Council that still needs to be over, to be reviewed by the town, by the city law director. He has had, has not had a chance to get to it, I'm sorry. But as you can see on the second page of the agreement, there is a difference in what the property owners and the township trustees have negotiated between real estate tax sharing, the sharing model that has been set up. And as you can see, it is set up in the Ohio Revised Code for a five-year, like, tax-sharing program. And they have negotiated a rather longer sharing program. And I know that there's been some concern about this from members of council because it does set up a precedence for the city to be, kind of, funding, underwriting a township with taxes. And so, we also have to get the law director's input on it. I know that we are very happy with the annexation. It's just this odd part with the township negotiation that has to be looked over and discussed among, I'm not really comfortable discussing all the ins and outs of the number of years that the Sunset Plan has been putting forward without the Pat Lang's input on this because he's much more involved with taxation law and such. Mike Knoll is here from the project. Would you like to put in anything? Now I have you on the spot. Can you come up or sit at the table or introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Mike Knoll, Archon Panis, Knoll Architects. It seems like it's been a long time since we started this process. And the goal was to try to speed along as quick as possible. We saw some potential roadblocks with the township, and that was the reason we kind of threw this idea out. We thought we would be, maybe, started a quicker process and gain a year on it if we did this. It's obvious to us that for this property to develop, we need to be annexed into the city. And no one's going to buy the property for doing that or start that process unless we are into the city. And so, we thought, well, this would be a way of avoiding potential delays with the project by doing that then.
And you mean delays with the township trustees?
Well, just the whole process. We knew that the township was not happy with losing land, taxable land. We tried to educate them on the fact that it's a good thing for them also because the way it's set up, this piece of property could have some very nice real estate on it. And within a few years, it would greatly out, meet all their needs, if not exceeded by tenfold, for taxation. And so, it was kind of just to make them aware of that and try to get them to move a little bit quicker forward on it then. We had hoped that, you know, that property would be, by now, something would be on it and developed at this point. It's looking like things may happen within the next couple of years, for sure. But this was two years ago then. And so, the owners have taken a very aggressive approach. They've hired some real estate consultants from Columbus to market it nationwide. They're working with other individuals nearby to make this property more appealing. And so, one would hope that there's some potential with that. And so, we'd like just to get, move forward. Because once it's annexed into the city, that takes away any kind of clouds on the project that someone who's buying it might say, well, jeez, you know, we'll have to wade through this two years and they may not be interested in the project then.
Right. Well, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any, we've talked about this annexation before. I don't think that the city has any problems with annexing and providing services and such. I think that, that the problem is setting precedents with township.
I understand.
And one reason why the Ohio Revised Code is, you know, this is established under the Ohio Revised Code to help townships go past the fact that a piece of property is being annexed into a nearby city. And so, you know, it's just that question of setting precedents, I've heard several council members, this kind of voice opinions about that. And I know that you want to, you know, go forward in front of the county commissioners on November 13th, is that right? And we can work on an expedited schedule with the city to provide you with a resolution with that. But I, I'm not comfortable putting it forward, saying, well, you know, for sure have the wording ready tonight because Pat Lang hasn't taken a look at this. There is this precedent-setting aspect to it. Can I open up to questions by council? Mr. Alaf.
Yeah, it seems like a relatively small dollar amount in terms of income to the township and likewise to the city.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking less than $2,000 in, over a couple of years. And that for the city also, it is kind of, we're going to waste that much money in trying to market the property then. So, it was kind of like, just to, you know, make them happy.
Financially, it doesn't seem like it's a, it's a big deal one way or the other, you know, for the city versus the township. I'm wondering how the township could block annexation if we did not participate in this type of.
They can't. It was just wanting to avoid any kind of situation where someone files a suit and gets dragged into court and everyone knows who's going to win with it. It was a way of trying to speed the process up. It's, it's the whole purpose, I mean.
And the second item, under, under that part in our draft here, says that Hemske would pay for any direct costs related to police or fire services provided from the city, anything that was actually used there.
Right. So, my, my thought is, the most likely scenario is a brush fire occurring, which is going to require some kind of call. And other than that, when you don't have any, you know, structures on the building, being built or there, then it's going to be a relatively limited amount of call.
See, I, I see this, if a building permit was requested, at that point, then this whole thing would then begin to act as part of the state law. At that point, there would be income generated within a year to handle all those conditions where police would be needed for theft on the bill, on the site for, under construction. And so, that would be handled with it then. So, it's just that uncomfortable period of time where it's just sitting there before someone does something with it then.
Right, right. And we have our planner here tonight, so I, do you have any comments about this?
I don't have very much.
I know you've been working on this with.
We have been working on this, I think, from, if you're looking at, good evening, by the way, Paul Logue, City Planner, Fort Street in Athens. If you're looking at the, the piece of land specifically, it is a large piece. It is likely the last reasonable parcel that we would see on the far east side that would be developed. It is surrounded by property that's incorporated into the city already. It has a industrial park or a research park to the immediate west of it that is now almost entirely full, I believe. Is it CGI, Mayor?
CGI, yeah. Still got some space in there.
Okay. So, this would probably be the final major development site on East State Street. For whatever reason, it has never been annexed into the city. As a general rule, I would not be a vocal advocate for continuing to annex further east from where we already are on, along that because there's floodplain issues and, and sprawl issues that have been stated concerns of a lot of council members and stated in our comprehensive plan. However, this site is a, to me, seems obvious, it's ripe for development. Infrastructure is all around it, development's all around it. It's, it would probably be an ideal spot for some sort of either a major retail or ideally some sort of a major industrial park or a major commercial park where we could have some good, good, good-paying jobs. The details of that contract specifically, I would prefer not to speak on it, I don't feel like I'm a worthwhile expert on it. I believe my understanding though, and Mr. Knoll, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the only thing that the, the city wouldn't really be losing anything from the deal? It would just be a difference of the amount of taxes that would be paid to the city after annexation occurs, but prior to development?
It would, as is written, there would be, you know, that short three-year period of lost income, technically as it's annexed in. So, if it would be annexed right away, there would be a short period of time where there would be a couple thousand dollars lost of generated income. But one would hope that, that reverse would happen is that when it is annexed in, that the process would speed up quicker. Therefore, you would quickly gain that by, gain it back by having a development curve maybe a year or two quicker. And therefore, that income will offset, well offset what the loss is. And I think the reality is, the fact is, is once it is annexed in, that it's going to be appraised at a different value, and probably that is going to offset it anyhow. Because it'll be appraised at a little bit higher value because it will have public utilities then, so.
So, I think that once Pat Lang takes a look at this and looks at the precedents that this potentially could set, the resolution can come forward, looking at the city, city services that will be provided, that's part of the resolution. And the, you know, our acceptance of the extended Sunset Plan or not with this annexation. But I think, no matter what goes on, the annexation will go forward with, with that. So, that's my understanding. Steve?
I, I kind of had a question that's a follow-up to Member Falls', you know, the issue about fire and police and fire, the only thing that we could imagine happening would be a brush fire, but a brush fire, you know, assuming that, that Hemske is going to take over or make sure that, that all code, city code is followed, specifically, you know, the grounds to make sure that they're mowed and so on and so forth. As, as has been going on, all along, but it's, now it's within the city code. Follows all city code guidelines.
Yeah. I don't see it being a big fire hazard there either, but that's the most likely.
I agree.
Mr. Sands?
Has anybody, I don't recall the session, do we have an estimate how large that parcel is? How many acres?
Fifteen acres.
I'm sorry?
Fifteen acres, three parcels.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a way it's set up in the zoning code, we can only subdivide it unless we go to full plan unit development. And so, we chose to divide it into five acres at this time with that then.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? So, I will email Pat to remind him again to, this is on his desk. And I will contact you probably later in the week.
Okay, great.
Thank you for coming by. I know that you came back, you guys came by at the last committee meeting and we didn't get to you because we had other stuff afterward to talk about. Thank you for coming by tonight.
Oh, not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Second on my committee meeting is revocable license renewal, which is at 221 and a half and 221 Columbus Road. This is for a 10-year revocable license for the municipal right-of-way, city right-of-way. All the paperwork has been put in and signed off, and it's for a sign on the right-of-way. It's already there, go by and look at it. There is a picture of the sign. So, it's there. Not a Muckler man, but he's waiting for the Muckler man to show up, but I won't. Is there any questions about that? Third thing on our agenda is the Historic Preservation District. And this has been in the works for several years. This is mentioned and recommended by the Comprehensive Plan. And tonight, we have Planner Paul Logue introducing it and discussing the, why we want to do this for, for the city. I think it's a smart move. Paul?
Thank you. I was asked to move seats, so please bear with me. Good evening again, Paul Logue, City Planner, resident of Fort Street in Athens. I guess, to begin with, you know, my responsibilities as planner for this city, a lot of days and a lot of times, I wear a lot of different hats, some of which are directly related to planning, others are indirectly related to planning. You kind of do a lot of the other duties as assigned with a position like mine. However, my primary duty from the day I was hired was to implement our comprehensive plan, as goes without saying, I would assume. Our comprehensive plan looked at a lot of different issues around the city through a very large outreach program with a lot of public meetings, surveys, telephone surveys, stakeholder interviews, small groups, subcommittees. I know a lot of people in this room were active on that comprehensive plan. Mayor Wile, I believe you chaired a subcommittee while you were on City Council. Through that process, through that planning process, historic preservation was constantly discussed. When you look at the implementation sections of our comprehensive plan, it recommends, one of the major recommendations is that the city do what's applying for and becoming what's called a certified local government. Certified Local Governments is a designation awarded by the Ohio Historic Preservation Office following guidance from the U.S. Department of the Interior. And to, in order to become a certified local government for historic preservation, the first thing you need to do is adopt a historic preservation ordinance. Now, within that ordinance, you have to, or within your historic preservation program, you have, there's a lot of things that are on the checklist to be awarded a certified local government status in the state of Ohio. The ordinance that you guys have at your hands right now, we've worked on for, off and on for about two to three years. A lot of people have helped out with that. The Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission, we worked on it, it's Deo Rep. and, Deo Rap. And Lance Rep., they were the, they focused on historic preservation. While they served on that committee, Ron Luce from the Historical Society and I have had several meetings about this. And we continued to edit through a draft ordinance. And my final edits, I probably dealt with 10 or 15 phone calls and 50 to 100 emails with Nathan Bevel. He is the Certified Local Government's Administrator for the Ohio Historic Preservation Office. Nathan would work with me. I probably drove this guy nuts. I feel guilty about the amount of time I stole from him. However, when we got down to it, the final ordinance draft that's sitting with you right now meets all of the requirements of being enrolled as a certified local government, which again is a goal of implementation for our comprehensive plan. The ordinance is, it's pretty simple, I think. What it does in effect, it creates a Historic Preservation Board with five voting members and two alternates. Those, those members will be appointed by the mayor and ratified or agreed to by City Council. They would all have some sort of a background in planning, local history, architecture, historic preservation, land use law. They would, so we would be bringing an educated body to that board. And then, as you can see, they would have, be granted some duties from council. Those duties would include making, making recommendations to council for properties and districts to be designated as, as historic. They would act as liaisons on behalf of the city to individuals and organizations that are concerned with historic preservation. They would take on some continuing education responsibilities to the public regarding preservation issues and concerns. They would do inventories and surveys of our cultural resources and local historic properties, and they would be following the guidelines established by the Ohio Historic Preservation Office. Additionally, if, if sites, buildings, or districts are established, they would have the authority to deny applications or permit applications for appropriateness for any changes affecting protected properties. Many cities create guidelines specific to districts. Other cities allow the U.S. Department of the Interior standards, which are included as an appendix in that ordinance, to follow. This ordinance itself would not designate any districts, it does not designate any sites, it does not designate any buildings. We looked at, I looked into doing that at first, and then I realized that there's no reason for me to try to make that argument when I'm not an expert, and it would seem reasonable that if we're going to create a body with five members on it that would have that background, that they could then do the research and do the legwork and work with City Council to create or adopt those sites, buildings, and districts. And the other reason, now, well, I guess several reasons, of course, but, you know, I think for, for the, the time I've been in Athens, I've struggled with the fact that we haven't had a historic preservation ordinance adopted yet. This was looked at back in the early 1980s. In fact, the Athens Uptown District was registered at the national level back in 1981. So, we're 31 years later and we still don't have any, any standards for that district. There has been opportunities in the late 70s where there were guidelines established and tax credits were offered, and low-interest financing was offered from local banks in order to encourage that type of behavior. This is something we could be looking at again. When you look around the state of Ohio, you see that historic preservation is the norm, not the exception. And Athens is about as historic as you can get in the state of Ohio. We've got the, one of the oldest universities in the country here. I don't, we've been established as a city since 1797, according to that flag right there. So, we're, what, 115 years in now, or 215 years in now. And so, we're, we're still working out a lot of these issues. There's big and small cities around the state that have, that are certified local governments and that have historic preservation. There's a few cities in the region, including Gallo Police, Lancaster, and Zanesville, that are all members. There are a lot of college towns, including Oxford, Kent, Oberlin, and Berea, which are all traditionally known as college towns around the state. And of course, Athens is not on that list. You've got big cities such as Cincinnati, Columbus, and Cleveland, and Toledo that are all on that list, as well as Akron. And you've got a lot of smaller towns and suburbs around the state as well. Additionally, historic preservation, there's a lot of economic incentives to do it. There are tax credits available from the state and from the feds for the rehabilitation of historic buildings, whether they be designated as on the National Registry or if they be deemed significant to a local district. There's even, at the federal level, there's even a 10% tax credit for any building built prior to 1936 that are eligible for, if they follow standards of historic rehabilitation. Additionally to that, I think, if, it's important for us to really make sure that we're doing what we can to protect and to respect the history of Athens. As Ron Luce, I'm sure, can attest, we have a very rich history here. We've got some beautiful buildings. We've lost a lot in the past. I, I think of the Berry Hotel as being a real shame that we've lost that. We have some buildings right now, such as the Armory, where if we were working through a certified local government or with a Historic Preservation Board, we would be put into a better position to apply for, to have grants for a building like that from the city's perspective. And so, from my perspective, I believe just, again, just my responsibilities for implementing our comprehensive plan. To me, this is a key part of that success. I know we've, earlier this year, we adopted a, we created an Environmental and Sustainability Commission to work on a lot of the green initiatives that are in our plan. I don't have a lot of the educational background specifically with something like environment and, and green initiatives to take a lot of the lead on that. So, if I can work with a, with a board and a committee of people that are, that are energized and interested in working on that, then we can then approach City Council and approach the administration with some recommendations. And then, it's a lot easier for us to move forward and see some of those successes. Historic preservation to me is, goes hand in hand with that type of idea. It gives some citizens some empowerment to work on these issues, and it's also taking ownership of, and pride in our, in our history. I get asked a lot from folks around town, and probably a few of you, there's a misconception or there's an expectation that if something is listed as a historic property at the state level or at the federal level, then there's some protections that come with it. That is absolutely not the case. Any historic building in the United States, unless there's a local ordinance that addresses it, can be repaired, rehabilitated, destroyed in any manner that the property owner chooses. It is only through local ordinances and local respect and local treatments of those buildings that there's any protections granted to them. So, if we have concerns about the preservation of buildings in our city, then we have to take that responsibility. And the only way that those of us in this room can take any responsibility towards that is by creating laws. That's all. I don't want to talk too long, I apologize. I can be long-winded.
So, five questions to him, and first let me set the record straight. I abuse him as a planner because I give all sorts of things to him. I apologize for that, but he's.
It wasn't a criticism.
No, I know, I know.
You know, the position of planner is a fairly new one in our city, and he catches everything I need strategically thought out. And he's done some good work here.
Well, first, I would like to say that having a planner as the Planning and Development Committee Chair is, just puts the level of, of expertise and work at, for the city at such a high level. And we really appreciate all the work that Paul does.
Thank you.
And it's just, it's phenomenal how much more, you know, because he's dedicated full-time employee of the city, that so much more of the comprehensive plan is being, you know, put into place. And I think that that just makes the level of government in the city just that much higher, so. And this is just another example of, of your work, and I really appreciate it. I'd like to, you know, give my full-hearted endorsement of this because this has been in the works for, you know, two years, and it has been recommended by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Commission, whatever. We have so many, we have to figure out the acronyms for all our committees. And so, I would like to point out that this is, once again, not establishing districts or anything, but providing for a transparent, democratic way of, of providing input for public and having experts be able to look at inventory and such in the city. I think that's always a better way of doing it, and having some, you know, council be able to do it or, so. Are there other, their questions?
I, I want to second everything that Member Paul just said. I, too, having lived in 14 major cities in my lifetime, one of the charms here in Athens was the environment, the structures, the, the. was the environment, the structures, the, the history for Athens. And so I, I am so happy that this is taking place, that this is moving forward, because I think it, too, is much needed within the city. I, I'm also, after reading through it, I really like a lot of the different components that make up this particular chapter for city code, in that, you know, there is a little bit of flexibility, as I read it anyway, in terms of renovations to a structure, because I've, I feel that there are many structures here in the city that have, that are historic in nature, but were given kind of a spiced-up look to them, to where they still fit, you know, with the, the nature of the city, but also kind of have a hip look to them, upgraded somewhat. One in particular is Athens Cycle down on, on Stimson Avenue. I think that that was tastefully done. And so, again, I fully support this in spirit, and I'm glad to see it.
Thank you. Excellent product. Looking through it, and one of the things that I was most frustrated for me in my years on border zoning appeals was some of the issues that would come up related to historic buildings and this kind of thing, and just trying to make, trying to make decisions on buildings that, you know, you felt something shouldn't change there. So I think, again, echoing what Chris says, having guidelines, fair guidelines for people to follow is, is excellent. The economic aspects of it for the city, it is kind of surprising we've not done this sooner. So I think we move forward, or that would be my vote. The other thing is, there's mention about affordable housing, which, you know, that's one of my issues, so you did mention that. So that was good.
Appreciate your homework and two years of perseverance on this. One of the first conversations that you and I had when you started your position was this very topic, and Director Ron Lewis and I spoke about this as well, too, when I was campaigning, and obviously know where he stands on this as, as an important aspect in our community. So I see benefit immensely. Anyone who's ever visited a landfill knows just how bizarre it is to walk around the earth with, just dumping stuff there, and it makes more sense to preserve than to tear down, especially when we have so much history behind our uptown. So again, I, I support this measure as well and, and look forward to pushing it forward.
I just want to echo what everyone else has been saying. This is excellent. When you drive around towns like, like Westerville and Columbus and go through their historic district, you just go, wow, why don't we have that? One question I have, so, concerning the board membership, we're going to have to have five people who are really very well-educated in this type of operation. Do you foresee any problem finding people with this type of qualifications willing to serve so long for nothing, other than the, that warm, fuzzy feeling of participation in democracy?
Not from conversations I've had with people. I think, I think serving on some commissions and boards can be thankless for a lot of people. It does take a lot of time, and there's not much gratitude for a lot of the work that some of our citizens put in. Sometimes you can create some enemies, especially border zoning appeals members, struggle with some of that, with some of the decisions that they have to make. However, when it comes to historic preservation, I, I think we already have a lot of people that are really active in this. We have a, an excellent county historical society and museum, which has a well-trained staff, an excellent curator, and excellent director. We have a lot of local historians who have written books about history of Athens. Marg Stone comes to mind, Joanne Priestley. We already, we have a faculty that's written several books on the history of Athens, the history of development in the city, the history of the ridges, the history of even the village era, and the history of Ohio University. So from that perspective, I don't think, I hope it's not a challenge to find people that would be interested in serving on a board like this. It's possible, though, I would say, but at least from the conversations and the emails and some of the phone calls I've, I've taken on this subject over the last few years, I think if I was asked to make a shortlist right now, I could probably think of 15 names of people that would be interested in serving, so.
Thank you, Paul, for doing all this, and thank you, Mayor Wild, for allowing you to do that. Quick question. Would this board or commission, would their recommendations come back to council and then we would approve or disapprove them?
For the adoption of historic sites, historic buildings, historic districts, yes. That would be a legislative action to adopt them. That's correct. And as you can see, if you read through the ordinance, there's criteria and procedures that this board would be, that they're given with how they would make those decisions. And so it's not that you can't just say, well, we like this building, we're, let's, let's preserve it, or let's protect it. It's, it's that you have to justify using established criteria at, at both the state and the federal levels to explain why you think that building is worthwhile.
I guess since everyone else is saying something, I better come up with something. No, I was, I was really curious to know if you've come across in your preparation for this, if other universities work with these types of boards in terms of how they handle some of their properties?
I haven't come across anything with that. I think, I guess if we're looking at Ohio University specifically, since that's where we're, that's located here, my own personal opinion is that, for the most part, Ohio University has done a really excellent job of respecting the historic nature of, of the campus. I say that as a planner, I say that as an alumni, and I say that as a resident, and somebody who lived on campus and spent many years on that campus. But I haven't seen anything else with that. There's always an issue of, you know, there's several designated buildings already on Ohio University's campus. All of the buildings on College Green, not all of them, excuse me, but of course, the prominent ones, Wilson, Wilson-Toplar and.
McGuffey.
McGuffey, thank you. Those are already established. The, there's a few on Park Place that are established already as historic. The old post office on Union Street, that's a registered building. And they've done a really good job, I think, with protecting and respecting the preservation of those. In fact, I believe with the three main ones on, on College Green, even the air conditioning units that they have on all of those buildings are the only approved air conditioning units for historic buildings of their nature. And so they actually went the extra step to make sure that they, they were following the appropriate standards for something like that, so.
Can we finish the cycle here and say thank you as well for all the work that you've done, Paul, on this, and all the citizens who've helped from the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee? We were talking earlier about people in the community that you feel we have quite a wealth of people with expertise in this area. And I did notice also, though, then, that you're encouraging in the guidelines that they would attend some kind of workshop, seminars, things like that. So I'm assuming that the state historic society, historical society, as well as the national, have then resources for us to be training people.
They have a wealth of resources. They offer trainings and seminars and credits, and there's webinars, there's also national, statewide meetings and things like that that they can attend. The gentleman I was working with at the Ohio Historic Preservation Office, he said he would be happy to come down and do a training for a board once it's appointed, to explain some of those ground rules and some of those details. It is something that, you know, you, just like if you're a council member, of course, when you, when you're elected to city council, you don't know everything about every duty and responsibility that you're going to take on as a counselor. So it's something that you learn as you go, go through this, and with a board like that, it would be the same thing. They would be joining it because of their interest and then learning more about it as they go. And that's why you want a diversity. It would be really useful to have people who know a lot about the local history, and then somebody who also knows a lot about how to build something, how to, might understand the handwork involved or the, the handiwork involved with actually doing something, somebody who understands just general standards for historic buildings, who knows what a high Victorian is as opposed to a Western stick, as opposed to a prairie-style something, you know. Our shade tree commission is a lot better at telling me what type of a tree I'm looking at than I ever will be to be in the same frame of this type of a board. They can tell a Victorian from a Gothic or what have you, so.
Just one last question. Just one last thing. We've been talking a lot about recent past history, you know, buildings and things of that sort. How about archaea, cultures that existed before we did?
Yes, we included that in this ordinance, that archaeological sites can be designated. It's included in the definitions as well as in, of a site. It also, because of the sense of nature of archaeological sites, meaning that, you know, historically, and they've been looted, they've been pillaged all across the world once, once people find out that those are out there, it actually allows for, from the council's perspective, they can adopt them and, I forget the term for it, but you can go into executive session to adopt an archaeological site specifically, and then we don't, we can try to keep that location secret so that we're not letting people know that there's something worth pillaging or worth digging in. So that's included in this ordinance.
Situation where such a site may already exist on private property, and that private property owner decides, well, I, I want to develop that, I want to put some apartments, and I've got my bulldozers ready to just obliterate it.
It would be something we'd really have to work through, yeah. Yeah. But as it stands right now, there's, I don't.
But this would help provide us some tools to.
It would give us definitely some tools to work, work with a property owner to achieve, to protect that, yeah.
Okay, and again, this is the first step, putting a preservation board together and then putting the laws together. Realize we've always looked towards Ohio University for the historical perspective in many cases. If you look, the trees are the oldest, the buildings are the oldest. I'm glad this is being done. Realize, of course, that's one reason why we have never really put one in place, I suspect. One of the other things I'm aware of is always the, the business side of it that says, you know, you know, this will restrict what I can do. On the other hand, having conversations with some of the business clients or people out there, the other one is that they, if the rules are clear and, and fair, they'll play by them. So one thing you want to look at whenever you put this together, in terms of the F's of the board, and whenever the board comes across with something, is make sure there's clarity in there to a certain extent, so they know that there's a fairness, and there's a perspective that they're on an even playing field. We may, again, for training purposes, we may have to expend funds. We might have to think about incentives, financial incentives for preservation as well. I just put those, you know, aspects out there, just so you think about those when you're putting this together.
Right. Well, I think that's, the first step is establishing a board. And becoming, I think it's really important becoming a certified local government, because that will provide access to other, to, to more resources to be able to do some of this. And I think that the transparency and the public participation through a board makes it so that it will help to establish those, you know, ground rules if we decide to go forward with recommendations from the board. So this, this does need to be reviewed by the law director, so we will put that on his desk, too, along with the other things. And we will bring it up right after he does that. I will build a fire under him. So hopefully by Monday, we will have an ordinance putting this forward, so. I have one miscellaneous. Is there any comments from people in the?
Ron. Yeah. Very strictly, Ron Lewis, 15 West Hills Drive, I'm the Executive Director of the Athens County Historical Society and Museum. Talk about acronyms. I just want to lend my wholehearted support to this idea. I know that people like Joe Prisley were working on this back in the 1980s, and we've been praying for this for a long, long time, and I think it's wonderful, and I appreciate all of Paul's work, and I look forward to working with the council on this issue.
Thank you. I have one miscellaneous. We have been given a Athens City Planning Commission recommendation about rezoning in the Far East neighborhood, and I do not want to bring it up tonight for discussion because I think that we probably are planned, discussed out, and so, discussion out, sorry. You know, I'm a planner. I love talking about planning, but I know not everybody does. I will bring this up at the next committee meeting, so I will need a committee. And though, it will require a public hearing, so I want to put that process in motion so that we can start the 30-day countdown for the public hearing on Athens City Planning Commission recommendations. So, and we will discuss it more thoroughly at the next committee meeting.
Do you have a date for that public hearing? Have you put that together? No?
Right, so that's why we want to, so, and she'll figure it out. Oh, this is, no. This is just under FYI. So that's all the, that's all the stuff I have on my agenda. Is there any other miscellaneous for Planning and Development Committee? We love Paul's committee, as it stands for tonight. Thank you.
So now we'll move on to finances, personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two major items to discuss tonight, one of them being several appropriations that are needed. The second item are the next steps that are needed for the plans for our wastewater treatment facility. Of the appropriations, we've talked often before about what's called tax incremental funding, or TIF, which is in part how the East State Street improvements were funded. And we have an update from the Deputy Auditor Ray Hazlitt that says, we had an additional amount of tax incremental funding money come in this year, and it's more than anticipated. Forty-five percent of this TIF money that comes into us goes to the Athens City schools. And so it's appropriate for us with that money coming in this year to make sure that we appropriate it back out to the schools before the end of the year. So we'll be starting an ordinance that moves forward for that next week.
And that's about $15,700?
Correct, $15,700, thank you. Second item regarding appropriations has to do with the Oxbow Grant. And you might remember that we've been working for several years to begin the $3.1 million renovations to the Oxbow Bridge. And we, for various reasons, one of them being the early start of the school year with the switch to semesters, decided it would be better to delay until next year to do the major part of that financing. When we received the award from Ohio Department of Transportation, a $2.66 million grant, what we did is recognize that money and appropriate it. Since we're not going to be spending the money this year, actually, it was a $3.1 million grant, I think, and what we're doing is leaving $500,000 in the appropriations for this year for some anticipated expenses that we'll have towards getting ready for the Oxbow. And then we will reduce the appropriation in the ODOT Grant Fund 589 by the $2.66 million. So that way, it's part of that continuing conversation we've had a discussion about, you want to make sure that the city is accurate in reflecting what their certified resources are. And so since we'll be saving this money and carrying it over into the next year to complete the project, that's what we need to do, to have it accurately reflected in the, in the books. books. The next items have to do with the wastewater treatment plant, and I'm just going to give a little bit of summary background information on where we are with this project. Some years ago, we had received a letter, we weren't cited or anything by the Environmental Pollution Agency, but EPA issued a letter saying that they were concerned that we needed to have better front-end screening in the wastewater treatment plant. And in order for us to do that, we have begun a large project, which will be somewhere between 12 and 14 million dollars, and will be completing over the next few years to, to upgrade that. And what we're going to be doing is improving the clarifiers so they'll be more energy efficient. We hope we'll be also, at the same time, removing the smell that we sometimes smell when we drive by that area of town. And we're going to move from chlorine to ultraviolet methods in terms of part of the screening and the cleanup for the plant. Also then, as part of moving that along, back in 2011 then, we instituted a series of increases for the sewer rates at a modest rate, approximately 3% over the next five years. And what we're doing is, with that portion of the project, we're building up some cash in our fund so that we'll be able to make the loan payments for the, the money that we're going to be loaning for the, borrowing for the project. So the next two set, the two ordinances that are, that we are going to have come before us next, one of them will be authorizing our service safety director, Paula Hearn-Mosley, to submit an application and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement. And this will be, we can't, this is the next step that's needed in it, that we need to be able to authorize the city to apply for the loan. And then the second piece of legislation that we'll be moving forward is an ordinance that will authorize the service safety director to advertise and accept bids for the construction and construction engineering of the wastewater treatment plant facilities. And our timelines on these is that both of these ordinances would be that we'd begin reading, the first reading, next week, and then the second reading on November 5th, and likely passing these under suspension at that second reading so that we have things in place to be able to apply by January for the loan.
Questions?
Questions? Yes. Councilmember Paul.
These, this project is not to be confused with the corridor sewer, the county sewer project. This will go forward no matter what. They all have to do with wastewater, but this has been in the pipe, in planning stages for a couple of years. Andy Stone came by and gave us a presentation last year looking at all the scenarios. And so this is not because the county wants to put more wastewater into our treatment plant. They're two entirely separate projects. This one is fully, we're going head with it, and we're starting to do construction and constructing engineering on it. The other one is still in, we have to still look at that, and the mayor has set up an ad hoc committee to look at that.
I'm working on it.
Yeah, thank you. That's an important clarification. Councilmember Pappy.
So, the 3% began in the sewer, I just was kind of wondering that, if we could tell the public what kind of buildup we're looking at? Do we have any idea of funds?
All the council authorized was five years into the future, so we just had our first 3% here back in July, and.
So we just started?
Yes. And there will be some lean years on that, if you recall that projection, but it'll be addressed in advance so that we can look and see whether or not we actually need a greater increase.
So we just kind of started building up the war chest in July? Is kind of what we're talking about with the 3%? Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Member Nigley, and I appreciate the re-reminder of the history leading up to this moment, and I think former councilmember Nancy Bane was instrumental in working on this diligently and closely with our public works director to get us to this point. Again, it's not sexy stuff, but it's what needs to be done to better our community. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that we're looking at roughly a $15 million improvement on this project.
Yeah.
Which needs to be done, and is, again, not glamorous work, but something that is instrumental and important in keeping the community, city running smoothly and odorously, pleasantly.
Odorless, maybe.
Yeah.
Thank you, those are good points, too. Yes, Councilmember Gosney.
And in addition, it will also help improve the river, the quality of the river because our discharge will be a little cleaner, I believe, going out than occurring, because we'll be up to the latest standards and technology. But yes, it's a very big project.
Any other questions or comments? That's it?
Member Butler?
Wait.
I'm sorry.
We might have one other item.
It's just a miscellaneous, I guess we could just at least maybe begin the conversation, and this was brought to my attention by deputy auditor Ray Hazlitt, that as of September 28th, 2012, Senate, or, excuse me, House Bill 487 changed, which competitive bidding thresholds for cities, villages with an administrator and various other local government entities increases to $50,000. So, our conversation internally was whether or not council had to take any sort of formal action acknowledging that or not, so.
Thank you.
It's currently at 25, it went to 50. There's some other changes related in here, but.
I think we should probably, yeah, check further to find out whether we will need a piece of legislation, and it seems that that would make sense if that's what Ohio Revised Code is, and if we need anything in place legislatively to, to approve that so that that's one of our standard practices, that would make sense.
So, Ms. Nigley, will you pile that on top of the other pile of the Lord Rutter's chest, please?
You meant me, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What did I say? You and send Ms. Nigley.
Trying to assign her something, huh?
Okay.
No more.
Well, you can put her name on it. Okay, I'm sorry. Now we're going to move to city services, commis, committee. Number Gosney.
Number Butler.
I was messing with you there. Thank you. I just wanted to address a quick update, which Member Patterson will be able to offer more information on as well, but a number of us recently toured the city with the J-PAC Subcommittee to look at safety issues and lighting around the community. It was attended by a number of people, including our safety director, Paula Hearn-Mosley, and her deputy, Ron Lucas, myself, Member Patterson, our president, Mr. Sands, along with both the university's chief, chief powers, and our city chief, chief pile. And I think it was very informative, it was beneficial, there was a lot of information that was addressed during the course of that hour and a half, two-hour tour, and thought this would be an opportunity for us to tackle that or look at some of those updates or some of the information that, to share with the community what we, what we gained from that tour.
Thank you. It was a great tour, I think it was so successful that we're already starting to plan the second annual and kind of look at a couple of different things to kind of report any, the improvements that have been made, and then to bring the community in and get them involved, to continue to be involved in looking at safety issues in the city. We looked at 18-plus, because I think there was more, as we were driving around, issues that came up throughout the city that we looked at. It included anything from safety concerns to dark areas within the city. Some of it was looking at some of the signage for markings around the city, i.e. no turn-on-red possibilities for intersections. We also looked at a lot of positives. We looked at the new crosswalk that's down on Richland Avenue, crossing over from Schaefer, well, essentially Schaefer to South Green, and crosses over a brand-new crosswalk which makes it easier to go from, from that side of the city over to Peton Stadium. We also went down Morris Avenue and looked at the.
Raised crosswalk.
Raised crosswalk, as a praise to look at features in the city that work from a safety standpoint. And again, a lot of it was lighting, looking at different lighting areas, tree trimming that needs to go on within the city, replacing of lights or photocells on a number of different locations, looked at, a big issue, I think, that came up on the tour was to look at and literally get out of the bus and look around at the stairs throughout the city, a lot of which needs or is recommended for lighting. And we'll look at that in the future. But a lot of this takes time, obviously, to get out. There's some of the easier or quicker fixes, I think, are, I'm going to kind of turn this over to Paula because Paula was taking rabidous notes throughout the whole evening, but a lot involves AEP to replace any possible burned-out bulbs or photocells, which couldn't be done much more quickly, but the tree trimming are things that go on. So, like I said, it was, it was, I think, very successful, very informative, a lot of input throughout the city, received a lot of emails, not just from council members and city officials, but also from people through the city. And again, we want to push and have that happen again next year when we do it. Who knows? We may have to have two 16-passenger vans next year, buses to take people around. If that's what it takes, that's what we'll do.
Paula, did you want to?
You literally did want to interrupt me. Yes, I thought it was a good tour. I really appreciate from all of you, and I had Councilman Gosney identify a safety hazard for me just this evening. We need all the eyes of everyone out there, the eyes of the citizens, the elected officials. I tell my staff that, you know, if you're driving around and you see a hazard, report it so that we can get to it. Yes, a lot of tree trimming, a lot of lights to look at in terms of consideration on, on whether we will put them in easy, like you said, low-hanging fruit or indeed maybe restriping crosswalk areas, freshening up signage that's decayed and ratty and what have you. So, I really appreciate the opportunity, and we just keep trying to do better. And I believe you were going to address the J-PAC forum?
I do want to bring that up. Was that only a?
I didn't hear.
J-PAC forum?
He said he was going to.
Go ahead.
Okay. J-PAC, the Joint Police Advisory Council, is holding a open community forum at Margaret Walter Rotunda. It's going to be October 11th at 6:00 p.m. It is open to everybody and anybody, both, all of J-PAC will be there, will be essentially kind of holding a pseudo-meeting, but the most important thing is to have an open forum for people in the city, people on campus, students, everyone, to talk about interests they may have in what J-PAC is doing, but also to voice concerns about things going on in the city. Which again, is one of the beauties of J-PAC in and of itself, that it does encompass all residents within the city. And I do want to point out, I'm kind of jumping back to the tour itself, we did look at both city and university properties. We looked at a lot of the issues within the university, which again, is one of the, one of the things I'm proud of with J-PAC, that it is a total joint force.
Tell us again the date and time.
The date and time, it's October 11th at 6:00 p.m. in Margaret Walter Hall Rotunda. Just in the big rotunda, we'll have chairs set up and have an open mic up there.
Thursday at 6:00.
Excuse me?
For me, it's easier to say Thursday at 6:00.
Mayor?
I did not go on the tour, I was engaged in something else. You talked about the stairs, of course, lighting in the stairs is always an issue, getting enough ready power to that. I'm sure you're aware the Grosvenor to Fairview stairs will need repair eventually, that will be costly. It's, it would be important to maintain that, I think it's important. I don't know if you've got a chance to look at the stairs, the safe-out, the school stairs that have been put in by West Elementary, I don't know if you got a tour of that or not. We did not. Okay. Lighting, of course, is an issue. I know about two, three years ago, the Student Center was talking about lighting is, is important, but again, it's also campus awareness. When, when the service safety director talks about, "We're all eyes and we see problems." Everybody's got a different perspective of problems and what needs to be done, and that's, they're all important to hear, because everybody has different abilities as well as different, you know, hotspots where they think there should be more safety issues or more safety concerns, so that it's important that everybody brings it forward. The J-PAC forum is actually a continuation of the police community dialogues, which occurred many, over many years, but I'm glad it's, it's moved from community center to Walter Hall, so it adds a student perspective as well. I think I've tasked Ron Lucas, Deputy Service Safety Director, if we're talking about additional lights, is we really want to consider trying doing LED lights if possible. Convincing AP to go that route is another matter. We may have to actually pony up money, you know, down, you know, for the payment to the lights, because they'll, they'll just go with the straight cheapest lights they've got, and since unmediated lighting, they're not terribly worried about it, but we should be. Okay, so I'm just, again, I'm telling you, again, there's a price tag involved for some of the things we, you want to do. And that's not a problem, but as long as we're aware of it.
To kind of dovetail on that, another issue that I've received input from the citizens is, again, dealing with the issue of light pollution. And so also having, you know, light blockage that's sufficient on any new lighting within the city to avoid that potential problem.
Yeah, the Locustonary Society sent me several emails about that, I'm sure you've received them as well. And again, we like to say we like those period-piece lights, which shine halfway up and halfway down, but we should think about, you know, again, now we're thinking of start preservation of our lighting system. Do we want something that's, you know, looks historic but is inefficient, or do we want something that's more directed and more subtle, and therefore we can see the stars? You're right.
I guess one last thing to point out, that I do want to say that we also, some of us who hadn't seen it, which is one of the beauties of the city safety tour, is that we got to drive by and look at some of the other improvements that some of us may not have seen, such as looking at the slip repair on Grosvenor. We had a great tour guide, Ron Lucas was great, he made sure to point out all the issues and the things that have been, have been addressed within the city. So, it was, it was an enjoyable evening, as long as it was, it was, and productive.
And we did have several students who rode with us, who commented on some of their concerns with, with dark areas on campus, too. So, we did, we started to hear that, but I'm sure there's more to that conversation.
Thank you. Yeah, and like, along the lines of the lighting, too, in our quest to make sure that we're a pedestrian-friendly community, lighting obviously assists, one, in getting from point A to point B safely, so that you see where you're stepping, because many of our sidewalks are in disrepair or, and/or have roots pushing up some of the brick and whatnot, and, and so it is a safety issue and concern. I, having walked home to my residence and accompanying the mayor on our quest to get home on the end of an evening such as this on council, he'll take pictures of lights that are out and acknowledge that and report it and inform the powers that be that need to know, and that's something that all of us can be accountable for in helping better our community. So I, I do think it was a beneficial evening and needs to probably happen more often.
And remember, this responsibility of doing sidewalks is the property owner.
Correct.
Lots on there. So if anybody feels, you know, you know, some kind of public spirit to fix those sidewalks before we tell them about it, since they should know, do so, please.
Thank you.
We'll pay for the curb and the ramps, high and deep cap ramps.
One other miscellaneous, oh, I'm sorry. Was there anything?
No, go ahead.
Maybe two miscellaneous, but one was brought to my attention by Member Pappy, so I'll turn over to her to elaborate.
I just wondered, a few weeks ago, we talked about the Columbus Road property, if there's anything new with the finding the report from the 90s?
What we've asked for, our, we've asked actually to ask Cameron, who did the Tier One investigative report, and they actually did the FOIA request for the Information Act. All they gave back was all the correspondence that we've had with them in the Tier One investigative report, and some really old emails that were from our fire chief to them, notifying them of the fact that it's been closed. What he identified to me, Terry Wolfung, is Cameron, that Buster was created in March of 87, and the original underground storage tanks were installed in December of 86, so he said, "Perhaps they don't have the documentation." I know that you're planning on reading that for the third and final time, perhaps on next Monday, so we're doing everything within our power to see where, where are the old records? Where are they?
Any other questions regarding that?
Thank you.
I also had a question regarding, maybe another chance to update us on the boulder? Is there any updates there?
The boulder is being removed. I did not go up today, I was up there Friday, and it's coming down nicely in pieces. They've named Mary Dalsner Project Manager, she's out there inside every day, and she's just really enjoyed this, and it's, it's coming down. just really enjoyed this, and it's, it's coming down.
Wonderful. And again, thank you to the department and the work that has led to spearheading this.
And once it is down, we will get that repaved. We're kind of running into a time constraint here with our contractor for paving and allowing this contractor to get his boulder finished, but we'll figure it out.
The hope is to get Sunnyside done and Horace Street done pretty much at the same time.
I guess Horace's case would be if we can't get it completely repaved, we'll have it manageable through the winter and then pave it first thing next year, but the goal is to get it done this year.
Thank you. That's, that's all for me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Member Nisley.
Just a, the leaf pickup?
The schedule went out today.
And does that start next Monday? That's why I thought we might want to announce it tonight.
There was a press release, and I think we'll be putting a map up on the-
It's up, you have to click here to find the map, but it is indeed on the front cover of the website, and then click here, and then you'll have the map.
And I called in to order a load or two of the leaf mulch for my yard, so people can do that, too.
You can?
Yeah.
Ooh.
So, but I'm ahead of you already. Okay. Do we have other citizens who have anything they'd like to comment on tonight?
I don't have.
Okay. Hearing none, we will close this committee meeting at 8:11.